Good evening. It's my pleasure to open the Braintree School Committee meeting of January 25th, 2021. The marked time is 6:31. With that being said, our routine matters. We have, let's see, we have some minutes of open session and executive session to approve. I'd like to thank everyone, you know, has had time. It's the same minutes that we were going to approve back in the 10th. I think most people understand that we moved our meeting the 10th because of our nurses, who are an integral part of how we do business now. We're getting inoculated at the town hall as well as first responders. So there's an explanation as to why we moved said meeting. I guess I'll ask for a motion to approve the meeting, open session meetings of December 7th and December 14th.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. I'll ask for a motion to accept the executive session meeting minutes of November 30th and December 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Unanimous on that. Handing the floor over to Dr. Hackett for Communications and Commissions.
Good on mute. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. We have a few items, just to let you know that within your packet, you also have policy education subcommittee minutes from several dates, from July, August, two in August, two in October, and one in January. And you have finance and operations. These do not require school, full school committee approval, but we do include them in the packets now so that everyone has a good idea of how the meetings went, what was discussed. If you have any questions, you can direct those to your subcommittee chairs or myself. Finance and operations, two, three from November, actually, and one from December. You also have the South Shore Educational Collaborative, December 4th Board of Directors Report. You have the CPAC calendar for the remainder of 2021 school year. They put a few meetings and events on that calendar. I also included and just want to recognize Sarah Coughlin, who we have all had a chance to recognize a few times, and she just keeps wrapping up the recognitions here. The Braintree Patch actually recognized her as a Braintree hero during the pandemic. As we know, she has just spent an inordinate amount of time along with her unbelievable staff, providing food and meal services to our children and to our families, all the way back to March. I think she was up and running, I think we closed on Friday, March 13th, if I recall, Mr. Mayor, and then on Monday, she was up and going already with grab the gold meals for families. So she's just done a tremendous job with her staff. I also want to let you know, and I'm sure some of you already, I know some of you already do know, it's somewhat public information now. It is public. Mike Denise will be leaving us on February 1st. He is headed to, I want to say it's Blackstone Valley, but I just can't quite make sure that that's accurate. So if I've misspoken, please excuse me. As you know, Mike's been with us for a number of years, has done a tremendous job with athletic program. He is going back to once, from once he came, that was the position he held prior to coming to Braintree. So we want to wish him all the best. We are working on some interim solutions to get us through the school year. We will post the position. We'll talk about a process that's a little bit more broad-based. I'll be working with Chair Devon to figure out just kind of representation on the search team. The hope would be that we could get down to two or three finalists and do some community interaction with them, given the amount of community interfacing that that position does, both for the rec department and just across the board. It is a very visible and important position, so we want to give everyone a chance to have some input. So we posted it. We don't anticipate that we would start any kind of a process until after the February vacation, but we thought we'd get out there now and start getting a pool together. So just wanted to provide you with that information. And, Ms. Chair, that's all I have for Communications.
Okay, I did forget one thing. You mentioned recreation and, you know, we could talk about the athletic director and how we're going to select that and have input from the people of Braintree, but at this moment, I'd like to ask for everyone to observe a moment of silence for Nelson Chin, who was the Director of Recreation, and the 124 people of Braintree who have lost their lives due to this pandemic. So I'm out of order, but I will ask for a moment of silence for the following. Please. Thank you very much. Nelson, you'd be greatly missed. He was a wonderful man. Moving on to gifts to school. We have four gifts. First one is inadequate kindergarten school center gifts to schools totaling $706. Multiple checks totaling 706. Do I have a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
Motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Thank you. Our second piece on this is base state textiles gifts to school totaling $176.75. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I have a second too. Thank you very much. Third is the Norton Committee. Gifts to school totaling $150.41. One check in the amount of $150.41 from the Norton Committee to be used by the, I'm sorry, by the Braintree High School Theater Guild. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Thank you. And lastly, Friends of Charles Kukoris gift to schools totaling $500. One check in the amount of $500 from the Friends of Charles Kukoris to be used by CPAC. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote to accept all. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, as always, to the people that are making donations to make our schools better. Moving on to from the superintendent and staff.
So again, thank you, Ms. Chair. We're pleased tonight to have some guests with us. It's kind of nice. It's been a long time since we've been able to have some students join us at these meetings, given the boring nature of what we've been talking about. So we thought it'd be refreshing to bring our Students Against Destructive Decisions Club with us. I think the only person who's won more championships might be Tom Brady within New England. This group continues to dominate the Red Ribbon Week, easy for me to say, photo contest. And this is the fifth year in a row that the high school has won this contest. So we do have advisor Kelly Satrie with us tonight. Kelly, I know that you're with us. I'd love to have you introduce who you have with you and just talk a little bit about what y'all did.
Hi, guys. So I should have my four officers, Ally Carey, Samantha Doucette, Julia Fitzgerald, and I'm not sure if Chris Larkin is here. But those are my four officers. They're all seniors. They were really in charge of what they wanted to do this year. So the Red Ribbon Week photo contest is something that we have participated in four or five years now, and it is really exciting to say that we've won for all five years. But I got together with my student leaders and I said, I don't know, you know, after-school clubs look so different this year. What do you think? Should we still do it? And they were like, of course, that's what we're known for. We have to. So we went ahead and my four officers really were the ones that wanted to go full for us, really wanted to get the message out there and still have Braintree have this, what they're known for now, our Red Ribbon Week photo contest win.
And that's a pretty good thing to be known for. I believe America Kukoris might have something to...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. We have a, I have a little citation here to offer. And the Town of Braintree honors and celebrates the Braintree High School Students Against Destructive Decisions Club. In recognition of winning the National Red Ribbon Week photo contest for the fifth year in a row, it be it known that the Town of Braintree applauds you for your continued efforts to educate your fellow students in our community on substance use with your message of be happy, be brave, be drug-free. And as Mayor of the Town of Braintree, on behalf of its residents, we congratulate you. And this is just to put that on the screen. And having been part of the original partnership that was put together, one of the things that came up early on, and again, later on in some committees that we had set up, was how important SAD was to the committee itself. And SAD has gone above and beyond in working with the students and really showing leadership in this area. So I just want to say, on behalf of the town, that we are very pleased that you once again have earned this, this great honor, and it's well-deserved, and look forward to continuing to work with you through the partnership and any other way that we can help out. Once again, I just wanted to recognize tonight, the students that made this happen and congratulate you on, on your reward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Kelly, do you think you have any students that might be willing to say anything or...
They can have the floor.
They don't have to, but just want to make sure they have a chance.
Ally or Sam, you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition, and it means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Thank you.
And ladies.
Thank you.
You can leave the whole meeting if you want to, but you don't have to. It's really up to you.
Save yourself. Run.
Yeah, run now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is from the school committee, which is encompassed by subcommittee reports. Our first will be our, our Finance and Operations Subcommittee update, which will be given by the chairman of that subcommittee, George Kukoris. Mr. Kukoris, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, did you skip something, Mr. Chair?
Did I?
I think there's one other thing on the superintendent.
The, oh, the Mass, excuse me, Mass 2020 Student Academic Achievement Awards.
Font's not big enough, Mr. Chair.
You have the floor.
Thank you once again. Sorry, I've got too much on here tonight for, but we're also pleased to have two students with us tonight, who have, by virtue of their hard work, their academic pursuits, they've distinguished themselves during their high school careers. We traditionally recognize the members of senior class from rank number one and two for this award. This award is provided to us by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Every year, each school, each high school gets a proportionate number of awards to present, depending on the size of the actual student body. And tonight, we have two recipients, who I believe they are both on the meeting with us, and I would ask them if they could just say a few things about themselves and what their future plans are. And the first one is Kayla O'Shea. Kayla, can you hop on for us?
Hi, my name's Kayla. Obviously, I'm a senior, and I just wanted to say that Braintree High is a very supportive community, not only the students, but the teachers as well. It's been great to get involved in the things that interest me and find others who share the same interests. And I plan on majoring in either biology or biochemistry and hopefully working towards a PhD.
Excellent.
Impressive.
And our recipient is Kareem Mullin. Kareem, are you on?
Yeah, hi, my name is Kareem Mullin, and I also am obviously a senior at Braintree High School. I just wanted to echo Kayla's sentiments and say, the thing that has definitely defined my Braintree High experience would definitely be the teachers, because they are, I've honestly been able to say every year, that all of my teachers have been really passionate about the subjects that they teach, taught me, and that has really inspired me to move on. And actually, I'm planning on majoring in mathematics, and I would also like to eventually pursue a PhD, and I would like to return to education, which has been in a huge part thanks to my teachers. So thank you to the Braintree community for supporting me throughout these past 12 years.
Well, congratulations to both of you. We're very proud of you. And Kareem, if, when you're ready to come back, just give us a call.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd be glad to have you. And Kayla, if you decide to go in that direction, we'd love to see you as well. You are always welcome back.
Thank you, doctor. Very impressive resumes. You know, I felt myself scanning going, are these teachers? Wait a second, are they putting in? And I was looking for the, I saw the Stanford University for virtual, for Kareem, and I'm like, okay, some of, very, very impressive resumes so far. I don't think I had one that was more than half, a third of a page spelling my name right when I was graduating high school. So very impressive. We look forward to, you know, shall we say, shall we say, keep keeping up with how you do in school and come on back at any time. It's greatly appreciated to have you amongst us. Okay, moving on now. From the school committee, like I said before, encompasses subcommittee reports from the chairpeople of those subcommittees. Our first is our Finance and Operations Subcommittee, which is chaired by Mr. Kukoris. Mr. Kukoris, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our subcommittee met last Thursday on the 21st, and we had several things on the agenda, and Dr. Hackett will bring you up to date on one of those items. And we also talked about facilities. We had some facilities updates. We discussed the VHS feasibility study, which was approved in the recent debt exclusion vote, and we, we had a procedural motion to put that on the table until we get further along in our process with the MSBA, if we're so approved. So just want to let the committee know that we did vote to put that on the table at this point, only procedurally, so that we don't enter into a feasibility study prior to being invited into the MSBA participation. We also did a quick discussion about self-middle school, and we talked about the MSBA program that will, will help us with roof replacements. We had a discussion about the capital plan, and we plan to attack that at our next meeting. And then we also talked about how the budget calendar will fall this year, with the final process being that we'll be presenting something to the mayor in early May. We also, the final thing we did was just talk about how we'll move forward with the budget process, and the next step is we will look to have the town finance director come in and give us an update on the state of the town finances over the next couple of weeks, and then we'll move forward to keep our process going along. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hackett to do a brief presentation, as he presented to us the other night, on the planning for expanded in-person learning, and then we'll open it up to comments. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, of the Finance and Operations Subcommittee, not like you're in charge of the whole thing, have that go to your head. So good evening, everyone. Again, hopefully this is the last time, for the final time, that you'll be hearing from me, and I've asked Mr. Lee to join me. We're just going to kind of go over a bit of a high-level overview of the implementation of expanded in-person learning at actually all levels, elementary, middle school, and the high school, which is slated to begin on February 1st. So with that, we just kind of give you a really a high-level overview of what the changes you can expect. At the elementary level, we'll be adding two additional hours of synchronous instruction on Wednesdays. As you know, currently, Wednesdays are part synchronous, part asynchronous. We are going to expand the amount of synchronous instruction, which will be happening in the mornings, is when it's actually collapsed the cohorts, so they bring their E, A, and B cohorts together. And I believe it will now be for a three-and-a-half-hour session on Wednesdays, so up from one and a half hours. And that really is the only change for the elementary level is February 1. At the middle school level, students will be in-person and/or have live synchronous instruction for almost the entire school day, including Wednesdays, which is different from our other levels. And there's a few reasons for that, which we can discuss if you have any questions about it. The Wednesdays will be full remote, and they will be full synchronous. So middle school students at that level can expect that they will be receiving on Wednesdays a full day of synchronous instruction remotely. We will maintain the schedule that will be implemented, which students will have five or six classes each day, with classes of 50 minutes of length. So the entire day, all week long, for our middle school students will be, will be delivered through synchronous instruction, whether it's through a Google Meet or whether it is in-person. Mr. Lee, if you want to fill that out any more than what I just pointed out? Whoop, can't hear you. You might have to log back in. I'll keep going and await your return. At Braintree High School, we are eliminating the cohorts while still maintaining six feet of physical distancing. That is doable for us, really mainly because of the number of students we have in a full remote program. This will allow then for Ford, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, will be in-person instruction for students who are joining us or who are with us currently in-person. We will talk a little bit about, in a minute, about what time they would be getting out. We also would be providing full-mo students with in-person, with instruction with the in-person students via concurrent learning through Google Meet. So essentially, if our students who are currently in full mode, and this is the only place this happens, at the high school level, we don't have a separate staff for our full-mo students. We've been delivering our full-mo students' instruction through our own staff. That has been, there's positives, obviously, of them having our own people. We made the decision early on not to, to hire that out to an outside contractor, like some school systems have done, but we want to enhance the amount of time that our full-mo students are going to be participating in person. So again, really, full person, fully remote, as well as what is now really just one cohort, will be receiving live instruction for all their classes, all day, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesdays will be remote for all students with synchronous, synchronous classes in the morning, and then asynchronous lessons in the afternoon. I want to get into a lot of detail about this tonight, but I just wanted to point out that the reentry of students who are currently fully remote, who wish to switch to hybrid or essentially in-person, you know, our number one priority has to be safety. And, and the reason why we're able to do this right now is because we can maintain six feet of physical distancing at the high school, based on the number of students who are in our current in-person program, in our current fully remote program. So we are going to field student requests. We will be evaluating them as we go. We will not be opening up slots for students who want to make that shift from fully remote. On February 1, we want to get into our schedule for two weeks prior to February vacation, so we can get our feet under us and get a better sense of how things are going. Again, safety being the priority. And then as of February 22nd, we'll be looking to bring students in. So part of it is really going to come down to whether or not we have specifically enough space in certain classrooms in a student's schedule. We've talked about some accommodations we can make if, for example, we don't have enough physical room in a student's, a couple of periods for a student's schedule, then we might be able to do something for them to be able to participate through Google Meets within the building, so that they can be with us and then travel to their classes when they're in session. If we get kind of a critical mass, and we need to move a classroom, because there's a lot of students who need to come back into it, and we will then be looking at other spaces within the high school to make that accommodation. The media center has been really quite honestly, a makeshift mass unit, as I like to call it, for us, because we've had, when we've had students who have been, teachers who have been out due to quarantining, we've been able to have them deliver instruction to students in the media center. We bring them into the media center, and students can participate in actual live Google Meets classes with, with their classmates and with, with the teachers who are actually would be instructing from home. So it's been a critical, flexible space for us. It has really helped us to manage through the different, the amount of quarantine that we've had to do off and on. And we also still have some additional spaces within the building that we can utilize if we need to swap. Definitely our priority is safety. We understand, we want to get students who want to come back in, back into the building. There's no question about it. That's a definite priority, but at some point, we also have to make sure that we aren't getting into a situation where we're changing the physical distancing before we're ready to do that. So that is kind of a high-level overview. Mr. Lee, if you're back with us, if you, anything I missed or misspoke on or anything?
I was gone there for a while. I hope you captured it all. I think if people have questions, we can certainly answer them. And I know there's communications coming out of the high school as early as tomorrow to families, but again, if there are questions.
So if you wouldn't mind rolling into the next slide?
Certainly. So yeah, the conversation that we've been having for quite an extended period of time has related to the state's change in guidance, in fact, the requirement that students in a hybrid model are getting 35 hours a week, I'm sorry, bi-weekly, so over a two-week window of time, they're supposed to get synchronous instruction, which can be in-person, but it can also be Google Meets. Those things count as synchronous instruction as well. As you can see from the slide, as we sit here today, currently, the elementary schools are sitting at 31 hours. When we talk about adding those additional two hours on each Wednesday, those four hours bring us to that 35-hour target that we're shooting for. At East and South, you can see currently between the Google Meets that they have and the two days in-person that students currently experience, depending upon their schedule. So at the seventh and eighth grade level, world language comes into play, so you can see a little bit of a discrepancy in the overall time. So 33 to 36 currently, with the proposed changes that we are going to make on February 1st, that those times will bump up to 36.6, all the way past 40 hours a week of synchronous instruction. And at the hybrid, as Dr. Hackett explained, in essence, all classes will be synchronous. So you go from what is now 25 hours for those students who are coming physically into the building, but only seven hours for those kids who are full remote, to an equal 46 hours for both groups, as all classes become synchronous in their nature. So this, this was a huge improvement in terms of the synchronous time that we've been able to provide students. Again, it is a combination of Google Meets and in-person, but obviously, for those in the hybrid model, they'll be in school four days a week compared to two presently. Along the same lines, you can kind of get a sense of the timing of how the cohorts will be entering and exiting the elementary and the middle school settings. So 8:35 is the beginning of school for Elementary Cohort A. At the same time, buses are arriving at the middle school between 7:50 and 8:00 a.m. for Cohort A. Cohort A leaves the elementaries at 11:00, and 10:40 at the middle school level. And then you can see Cohort B arrives at the elementary at 12:20, 11:50 for the middle. Cohort B gets dismissed at the end of the day at 2:50 at the elementary level, 2:25, which is, you know, the traditional end time at the middle school under these models. So there's obviously some time in between that allows for lunch. It allows for, you know, students to get home, so they can jump on Google Meets, and also allows them some time to do some of the asynchronous work that teachers naturally assign. So that'll be the timeframes that we'll be operating under as we move forward. At the high school, the beginning and the end of the day are still the same, 7:35 to 2:05. That's always been the case, but you can see for the combined cohorts that are coming in to school the four days of the week, they get there at 7:35, they leave at 10:40. And their next round of classes, including the full-remote students pickup and Google Meets at around 11:40 a.m., again, ending at 2:05. That break in the middle, obviously, again, provides time for lunch. a.m., again, ending at 2:05. That break in the middle, obviously, again, provides time for lunch, provides time for them to get home, so they can jump on those Google Meets, and at the same time, provides them an opportunity to do some of the other asynchronous work that classes assign.
Okay, we'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make one final comment. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Through you, Mr. Chair. We did have some good discussion on this update, and we just want to let everyone know that, you know, the goal of the subcommittee was always to get us fully back into school, and that's what we started to plan a few months ago. I think, obviously, we were well on that road when things changed around the time that we had this second surge. So we started to put the things in place that would get us there, and obviously, we had to take a little bit of a step back. But we want to thank the administration, our teachers, our bus drivers, and everyone that's been involved in getting us to this point. And we feel good about where we are in the runway. We're getting close to the point with vaccines now and testing that we're going to get, you know, we're going to continue to move down the road that we planned to go down, and the subcommittee will continue its work to work with administration and work with all of you to get us to that place when we're all back in school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Please, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to start off by telling you that we did, as you all probably know, we honored the Nurses Brigade with the Martin Luther King Jr. Award. And it was so fitting, because from March 13th, when we closed school on, they made themselves available for contact tracing and have just been one of the greatest assets in fighting coronavirus in our community, as well as in the schools. So we're at the point now where we were able to vaccinate our first responders, our nurses, et cetera, everyone that was in Phase 1. We continue to do that. We have vaccinated over 331 or so individuals. And we were fortunate enough, because we have such professional nurses, we were able to get the extra doses that some of these vials had in them for waste, just in case there was any issues of drawing the doses. So we had 300 doses. We ended up with more than 10% more doses out of those vials. And I really can't say enough good things about the nurses and how hard they've worked and helped us. As far as, you know, the overall picture and vaccines, we just had a meeting this evening with Secretary of Health, Ms. Sutters. And the next, in Phase 2, which starts next week, we have 75, those folks that are 75 and older, and then 65 and older with two or more comorbidities. And then it goes on and on for there. But one thing that I assure this committee is that we do not waste any vaccines. Once those vials are open, we have a bullpen of individuals ready to go that are in that phase in order for us to make sure that we maximize those vaccines, and we have not wasted one vaccine. We monitor our refrigeration system. It's monitored by the state. We have a great setup here at Town Hall that has been the setup we've used for all of our vaccinations over the years. And the reason we've had flu clinics for so many years was to prepare us for a pandemic as we have today. So I think that the process in which we have moved after the break, what we've moved into, and basically, the system that's put in place and the new learning schedule, et cetera, really speaks to the fact that we still have a surge going on. It may be at the point where it's starting to level off a little bit, but we do have a large number of young individuals, school-aged children, that are positives. And by maintaining the six-foot distancing, which we have proven in the past, is more than adequate to protect individuals and keep them a safe distance from someone if they are positive. I think it's really protected us from transmission within our schools. We're one of the few districts that are able to maintain in-school learning to the level that we have and the amount of time that we have within the whole state. And I would just say that we will continue our quest to get more doses of the vaccine. We've deployed the Moderna, which has a second dose, a booster dose, which goes from a 40% to 60% protection to approximately 94%, 95% with the booster dose. So they're 28 days apart. So if you look, if you do the math based on where we are right now, just finishing up Phase 1, going into Phase 2, we have the ability right now, we have individuals signed up for Phase 2, different parts of Phase 2, where we potentially have approximately 4,000 people that could be vaccinated if we had the vaccine. So we're waiting on the state. There is a little bit, you know, of a waiting game on it, but we will take whatever they give us. And I think that staff has done a great job, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Lee, and all of the staff has done a great job coming up with a plan to get us through the next phase of this. And it is my hope for us to vaccinate, my goal is for us to vaccinate more folks than infections that we've had in the community, which is over 32 to 3300. It might even be up to close to 3500. So I think once we get to that point and we start, you know, to pass the number of positive cases, we're going to make a real dent in the virus in the community. But I think the most important thing is to understand, for everyone to understand, that the proven six-foot distancing with masks and protecting our staff and our children and our children's families from the spread of this virus has been very important. And I'm glad that our leadership within our administration has been able to put something together, like gives us more than what is required by the state to make sure that our children get the best possible education during a pandemic. So I just want to say kudos to them. And on my end, we will continue, the health department, the school nurses, we will continue to vaccinate and deploy the doses as they come in, and keep the school committee updated as to when and how many teachers we're able to vaccinate once we get into the Phase 2 part of the vaccination plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That type of information is extremely important as we plan to try and vaccinate our teachers, and in doing so, trying to get our kids back in school full-time. It has always been our plan to try and get these kids back full-time. I think it should be noted that all the options, and I think I stopped counting at 16, I don't know what, you know, tonight's option that's being necessitated by the Board of Directors and DESI. By the way, they gave that to us a few weeks ago, and we asked for an extension of two weeks, not a waiver. If we had asked for a waiver, it tells them we're not going to try and get there. We asked for an extension from the 19th of February 1, so that we could, shall we say, work over the moving parts of getting these children in in this plan. So I think people have to realize that there's no person on the school committee that has liked the options we've had to put forth. They all have their weaknesses, and frankly, they all suck. They do. Haven't liked it at all. There's always a problem with it. If it isn't a bus situation, which is a bottleneck. By the way, I now know that our buses are seven foot, seven and an eighth inches wide. And that's problematic as far as getting more kids on the bus. The fact that distance learning with tech issues, and by the way, thank God, we had such an investment in tech and help from Beld, your Commissioners Tom Reynolds, Tony Ignitti, and Jim Regan for helping us, we wouldn't be as good as we are now. So I think that everyone has to realize that this school committee has had to make choices that are terrible, that we don't particularly care for, but it's what we've had to, to try and get more kids into school. And, Mr. Mayor, I love the fact that you're not wasting any, you have a bullpen of people. It shows me that your, every drop of this vaccine is important for us getting our children back to school. And you've always, you've always kept consistent with that message, and I thank you. Now, moving on, our next subcommittee is our Policy and Education Subcommittee, which is chaired by Ms. Jennifer Dolan. Ms. Jennifer Dolan, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we?
We have to take a vote, don't we?
The other item the Finance and Operations Subcommittee dealt with was the funding of our clubs and activities at the school level out of the student activity accounts.
Yes, of course. I remember that. My apologies.
I believe the recommendation was to bring forward to the school committee the authorization of expenditure out of the student activity accounts for the funding of those activities which are in your packet.
What we're doing is we're taking out of our funds to be able to, our funds to fund our student clubs and activities. This is part of, you know, normal, and I love being able to say "normal," shall we say, in how we move forward in business. So at this point in time, does anyone have any comments or questions, or as it ascertains to this situation?
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Mr. Kukoris, you have the floor.
If there are no, if there are no questions, I'll make a motion that we move forward.
To the approval of funding for student activity accounts. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Ms. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. We will be funding that. Thank you very much. God, for some reason, I'm not getting this stuff in a readable way for me. I must need glasses now. Okay, so let's just give the floor again back to Ms. Dolan, who handily chairs our Policy and Education Subcommittee.
Yes, actually, I had some thoughts on the reopening stuff that we talked about. I'm not sure all of us got a chance to comment, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
By all means, by all means, please.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll head on back to policy when you're ready. I had just a couple of questions. One was around a resolution that I saw that was actually from the Mass Association of School Superintendents, where they wrote a letter to the governor asking for prioritization of vaccines for teachers, which I thought, you know, for whatever it's worth, I think is a great idea, if it can help. So I was wondering if the mayor was aware of that, and if there's any, anything we can do to help prioritize those vaccines for teachers as well at the state level. I'm not sure if that's anything that we would have any impact on, but of course, it's of great interest to this group.
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Mr. Mayor.
Great question, and I agree with you. So as it was told to us today, 75 years or older are the first group that we're going to be allowed to vaccinate in Phase 2. We cannot, you know, we cannot waver from that. And then the next group would be 65 or more with one or two or more comorbidities. We obviously would love to advocate even more for our teachers as well. It's all really a matter of doses. I mean, right now, we have the ability potentially to do maybe 1,000 vaccines a week. If we were given 1,000 vaccines, we don't see ourselves getting 1,000. If we're lucky to get 200 or 300, that'd be great. What we will do, though, is we have a list, and anyone that's in Phase 2, if it turns out that an individual does not make the appointment, we will not waste a vaccine. And depending upon who's available at that moment, we will vaccinate that person so that we don't lose that vaccine. And in some cases, as I said, we were able to get more vaccines out of the vials than was accounted for. So in the case of the 300, we got 10% more. We can't be guaranteed that. But based on that, when we do have extra doses, we have, you know, this bullpen of folks that are waiting to get vaccinated, and really, we try to get people in here. And if it's someone that's in the next group, 65 with the criteria, or a teacher, then we go to that group. What I will say is this, if there's an opportunity, and we tell this to everyone that is registered and that are registering now, if someone has the ability to go through their primary care or their pharmacy prior to us being able to administer and deploy the vaccine to them, we tell them to get vaccinated. And I think we're probably going to see within the next month or so, a surge of vaccines being available. CVS is doing it, Walgreens is doing it, we're doing it. I think by having our own vaccination clinic here, we just add to the odds of someone being able to get a vaccine in an expedited way. But I 100% agree with you that we should have the ability, I think, to vaccinate anyone in that group. I want, obviously, to take care of our most vulnerable population or elderly, and that's important. And it's really just a matter of supply. And for some reason, the supply is just not to the level that it should be. And Johnson &amp; Johnson is at the FDA right now. They get approved, which should happen sometime within the next 30 days or less. It could be within the next two weeks. That particular vaccine is a one-dose vaccine, and I believe it's around 80% effective, whereas most of your flu vaccines are somewhere in the 60% workable. So I think that they, you know, there definitely is a desire to vaccinate everyone in this group, but we are in the position right now where the Secretary of Health is telling us that we are only allowed to vaccinate our 75-plus residents, and we probably have close to 1,000 people signed up already for that group. But once again, shining the light at the end of the tunnel is that you will see pharmacies, there will be availability of pharmacies and through primary care facilities, and maybe even some of these centralized sites. So there's other options that could come up if they do get vaccinated. If not, we will be here with the vaccine when it's available.
Thank you so much. And I just have one other question, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
By all means.
Thank you. You know, I know everybody wants to get the kids back to school full-time. I'm in that group. If I'm being honest, I found the whole second surge to be pretty discouraging. I'm not sure what the community commitment is to getting kids back when we see the numbers escalating in the way that they have. You know, I certainly know a lot of people are doing what we consider to be all the right things, but I just would encourage people to please help us help you by, you know, following the protocols and doing all the things that it's going to take for us to get the kids back. You know, because as we know, these surging numbers don't help us. But one of the things that I think is a barrier or a bit troublesome with the new plan, I'm all for it, to be clear, but I think transportation remains an issue. And I wonder if, if I recall correctly, DESI had loosened the reins a little bit or thrown the reins off the horse altogether. I'm not totally sure in terms of what we can do on the buses. And I just wonder if, you know, particularly around Cohort B, where the transportation for working parents can be a little bit even trickier, if there's anything at all that we can do to help improve the bus situation.
Yeah, I'd be happy to try to answer that a little bit.
By all means, Mr. Hackett, you have the floor.
Through you. Great question, Ms. Dolan. Obviously, you know, to your earlier point, we all have a vested interest in getting all of our kids back. The challenge we have is still physical distancing. I think that when we made the decision to not go to three feet within our buildings, I think that that decision also applies to our buses. And just to be clear, even at three feet, Mr. Devin mentioned the width of our buses, even at three feet, physical distancing, that doesn't- even at three feet, physical distancing, that doesn't add any additional students to our buses. So we are still at a, basically a fifty percent capacity. The question is, is can we become and continue to try to become more efficient with our routes? Um, we have some routes that are full. We have some routes that are partially full. We're looking at double runs. We're also looking, um, uh, strongly at it trying to add some transportation for students at the high school level who are more than two miles. But I'll just tell you that that number is about five hundred and fifty students. And I can tell you, if every single one of them wants, uh, 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 transportation, we don't have the capacity to do that. So, uh, we're, I, I know it's frustrating. It's frustrating for, for me as well. Um, you know, we do try to, um, pick up students i-if we can, and we're going along the route, and we have a route already established in this capacity on the bus. Uh, we are looking at the possibility of actually doing some kind of, of a lottery system. So if we can get down to less than two miles, say a mile and a half or a mile away from the school, and then creating a lottery, uh, because we know full well that, uh, we just would not have the capacity to do everybody who would be, um, in that, in that description. So, uh, I don't have a better answer than that. Really, truly, the only way we're going to be able to, to increase our capacity is just to go back to normal operation on our buses. And, uh, if we can get our drivers vaccinated, those who want to be vaccinated, uh, sooner the better. Because I, I think I would be comfortable in, in having that conversation with, uh, you know, with the drivers and with you as a school committee, uh, about if we have people who are, are drivers being vaccinated as well as our bus monitors, then, um, I think it would be a legitimate conversation to have about returning to a normal bus operation. That would have to coincide, however, with us also being comfortable with bringing more kids into our buildings at a less than six-foot distance, because obviously, if we were to increase our transportation, we likely would see more students coming in, specifically to the high school, which, um, capacity will, will be an issue to remain at six feet. So I think it kind of goes hand in hand. Uh, we continue to, to work on it, trying to become more efficient. And, um, we'll, you know, we will update the communities as, um, as the information becomes available.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Dolan, you have the floor as far as your, um, Policy and Education Subcommittee report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the Policy and Education Subcommittee has met a couple of times since our last meeting, and we continue to, uh, review a number of, you know, we'll call them more boilerplate policies that we've modified, uh, for our district, making, you know, changes from what the MASC provides as a starting point, uh, to make them applicable to our district. So, you know, we continue to build the body of policies that we have on file that are available on the school committee website, uh, or rather, on the, on the district website in the school committee section. So there are a number of policies here for first reading. And actually, I'll, I'll take two through six. Have to remember my Roman numerals, um, as ones that, um, you know, are being put forth for the committee to take a look at again as a first reading. So if anyone, um, has any questions about those or wants to discuss them, that's fine. Otherwise, we can, um, leave it, the, leave those there for your consideration and bring them back again with any questions, uh, second reading and potential approval at our next meeting. The, moving back to number one, we're revisiting the graduation ceremony policy around dress regulations. And this is something that was started pre-COVID and, um, you know, was tabled for obvious reasons. So I would like to call on Mr. Lee, if he wouldn't mind, to, uh, refresh our memories on the process that we were going through at that time, uh, to address this question.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Um, the topic of graduation and graduation gowns has actually been ongoing at the high school for a number of years. And it really gained some momentum last fall, uh, when more concerns were expressed about how inclusive our graduation ceremony was. In that effort, we pulled together a committee that had community members, teachers, administrators, and students, uh, to, to kind of look at the issue over time. We had several meetings to, to discuss what we as a group thought was in the best interest of the, the community and all of our students. Uh, and we made some recommendations, uh, to the Policy Subcommittee towards pre-pandemic, but really kind of right when the pandemic was starting to lift off, uh, which was around the point in time where some of the work stopped, obviously. Um, so, you know, the proposal that you'll see today, uh, it, and I have seen before, is not a new one. Uh, it was work that was done in earnest last year with a, a large group of people, uh, who really explored a number of different options in, in terms of really how do we make all of our students and family feel welcome at our graduation ceremony? And the recommendations that they put forth are represented in this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Dolan, please continue.
Uh, I thought if it makes sense that I could read the policy, um, just so that people know what is included in it. So.
Yes, please.
It is, uh, policy IKFB-R, graduation ceremony policy dress regulations. Each student at the graduation ceremony is required to wear the school-issued cap and gown, which shall be Braintree Blue with white accents. The VHS principal reserves the right to prohibit any apparel that does not meet the requirements below. Their decision is final and not subject to appeal. Cap and gown. Students are permitted to decorate the top side of their caps in a manner that is consistent with the spirit of the ceremony and the expectations for student dress and behavior that are outlined in the VHS Student Handbook. The school-issued gown is to remain unadorned. Cords and sashes. Cords and sashes worn with the graduation gown must be school-issued, with the exception of military sashes. Military sashes may be worn over the gown by graduating students who have provided written confirmation of their enlistment in any branch of the US military to VHS administration. The sash must be provided directly from their respective service branch and be standard military issue. So most of that policy has not changed. We actually adopted the, the military sash part of it, looks like at the end of two thousand and eighteen, um, in recognition of our students who are entering the military and, and some sort of current issues that were coming up around that time. So obviously, the material change to this is that the school-issued, uh, gown will be Braintree Blue with white accents.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kukoris, you have the floor.
So I, I remember the conversation, um, as part of the Policy and Education Subcommittee. And, uh, Mr. Lee and Ms. Dolan are correct. We did have a discussion, and I believe we had a vote that we brought forward to the school committee just before the pandemic.
Yes, so this constitutes a second reason.
So I believe this is a second reading, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
If it's the will of the committee, I'd like to make a motion to accept policy IKFP-R.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Thank you, Carla. Um, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
No.
Okay, the chair votes aye. It's one. Okay, motion carries. Um.
Thank you for.
Is that the conclusion of your, um, report, Ms. Dolan? Thank you for your report. Yes?
Sure. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to bring that policy back. I understand for, for some, it's a significant change, but I am hopeful that, um, the understanding is there as to the spirit of inclusion that we're, we're hoping to promote with this policy. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I know you've showed quite a bit of patience with the, um, you know, with the pandemic and all the different plans that we've had up and, and all things that go with that. There have been times when, you know, Policy and Education hasn't, shall we say, been given its fair due. But I do appreciate your patience and your willingness to work. And it shows in how your Subcommittee's coming forward with these decisions, and thank you again for your work.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Lamair?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would just like to say thank you to the Education and Policy Subcommittee, as well as the members of the Advisory Committee.
Okay.
For their time and effort.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not finished. During my first year in the committee, I attended, uh, educational workshops on diversity and inclusion, development and training, and I've conducted research and spoke to school committee members in other districts who have chosen to go with the one-color graduation. So I'm very glad that this issue can finally be resolved through compassion and a deeper understanding of gender and transgender experiences. I'm glad that keeping the status quo is no longer a reasonable consideration for this year and so that future graduation days will not cause discomfort to a group of students where forty percent of the youth suicides are LGBTQ students who already face daily discrimination and bias. And my only regret is that we weren't able to do this sooner. But I believe as elected school officials, together with administrators and educators and community leaders, that we do have an obligation to foster a school culture that is free of bias, prejudice, and discrimination and harassment. And as a community, we use these words, unity and diversity, but do we really mean them? And Braintree has long called itself an inclusive community, so having one single-color gap, cap and gown for students on graduation is an important step forward in allowing all of our students to enjoy this special life event equally without anxiety or fear and gender-specific colors might cause. And I just want to say, this is not about breaking tradition, but starting a new one. Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to our public comment part of our program. Let's remember what the rules are with public comment. You have, you know, please, if you feel comfortable, state your name, you know, and if, it's up to you whether you want to put your address. We please ask you no more than three minutes per person, but that is at the discretion of the chair. Items should be under the scope and the responsibilities of the school committee. And, uh, please be nice to each other. Um, our first contestant would be, doctor?
Yes, uh, Kenny Burnier.
Ms. Burnier.
I'm working off two screens here, so.
Okay.
Hi there. Sorry, I was muted. Good, how are you? This is, uh, it's Corinne Burner. Um, we are a Highlands family. And I just, uh, wanted to ask, you know, at, at what point do we? And I know you've considered all the options, and I understand that they all are not great. But getting our kids back to more live, in-person learning, because their, their mental health is at stake. So it's not just our physical health, but, you know, they need to, to connect with their classmates and their teachers more than they currently are, and their teachers are doing everything they can to support the kids, and they're doing a great job. And, and we really need them back in there. So I, I guess if other towns around us are able to do it, I'm, I'm wondering what our limitations are at this point and why we can't get our kids back into school.
What towns are doing it?
Didn't Waymouth just roll out that they're going to be doing it?
No. I believe they came back for, full-time today. Randolph also. Um.
Right. No, I know. I, I, but that's the plan. They're, they're starting, you know, to do that now. And so I'm wondering just, you know, what our difference is.
I believe we're ahead of the game as to what we have been doing. I know that Randolph's been full remote since before Christmas. I believe today was their first time where they go to, uh, to cohorts, two days, two days. So what we've been doing for months.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I would just offer to Ms. Burnier, I'd be happy to speak to her, um, if she'd like to, uh, set up a time to call from my office.
Yeah, because there's a miscommunication there. I know that we're doing more.
I would love a ca-I would love a call. That would be great.
My office, talk to Mary Ann, who's my administrative assistant, and she'd be happy to set up a time.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, next.
Is Ms. Beth.
Hi, my name's Beth Lyons, and I have a son at South Middle School, and we are from the Highlands District. So I understand all the thought processes that have gone into this, but I'm wondering why taking away a major subject is a good thought process when right now the middle school is getting their four core subjects in person on their two in-person days? And also for my son, he is now going to lose in-person resource because he's been able to go for the extended day. My other question is, why is a school district such as Quincy able to do their two in-person days as a full day, and we're not able to, and they are a much bigger school district than we are? My feeling is, if we can't get them back in for longer than two and a half hours per day, then leave the schedule the same, because for myself, now I've got to find a way to get my son to school at eleven fifty every day, because I don't believe he's going to be able to get transportation. So those are my questions.
Okay, our, um.
I don't believe that Quincy is doing all grades, based on what I've, in, in talking with some of their, um, some of their principals. So, I mean, it's a wide range around us. I think most of the cities that are surrounding us are in red. West Dillon, yellow. And I, like I said before, uh, we, we can't keep chasing off around. What was it? Today, I believe Needham shut down their high school due to increase in infection. So, so much for not getting infected at schools. Um, and there again, uh, uh, aren't we bringing kids back? We're, we're getting that above and beyond that magical thirty-five that Desi put forth in the Department of Education. What was that, a short five weeks ago? Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. Uh, doctor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just say as a general statement, I, I think that, um, it's hard to find reliable information about what every school system is doing, which is, um, disappointing, only in that, that, uh, really, I think that there would be a way to collect that. Uh, but I also understand that school systems are regularly making changes. I'm, I think that, you know, that where we are going to be as of February one is we are increasing significantly is, is, uh, shown earlier this evening in the presentation. In-person, not only in-person instruction, but, but as importantly, if not more importantly, live synchronous instruction, and, and that really is the goal for right now. And I, again, I would just offer that if, if people have specific questions about their own children, um, I would be happy to, uh, speak with them if they'd like to call my office and, uh, set up a time. Next caller is John.
John, you have the floor.
You are unmuted.
Hello?
Hello?
Ah, great, sorry about that. Hi, uh, my name is John Fabiano, and, uh, I'm a Hollis parent, uh, who, uh, I guess along with my wife is, uh, drowning in asynchronous work, technology issues during synchronous work, um, pick-up-and-drop-off times, and, uh, juggling all those things with working full-time. Concern about my own mental health.
Yes.
Obviously, most importantly, my son's mental health. Uh, you know, I think he needs recess, lunch, gym, any kind of socialization at school. Um, and really just needs more in-person learning. So like, the four short and a half days, is that really the best we can do? I mean, I've listened to you guys all night, um, but like adding that more remote learning to a Wednesday was just like an absolute slap in the face to those of us who have just been struggling this entire time. So I guess, like, you know, the mayor referenced the light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccines. I just want to confirm that, like, once all the teachers are at least offered vaccines, like, can the kids just, just go back full-time? Or is there, like, what other conditions are we waiting for beyond the teachers getting vaccinated?
By humble opinion, that's the main stumbling block.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, uh, as the mayor said this evening, obviously, if, if we're able to get, uh, whether through private, uh, their private practice, uh, or pharmacy, or through the town, when we're able to get to a place where every educator, including bus drivers, which is the other solve for transportation, until we get to that point, if we get to that point, the sooner we get to that point, then, um, we, I would, the conversation around, uh, essentially returning to a normal school schedule would absolutely be on the table. Um, as we know, the, the, the risk of infection is higher for our adults. The risk of, um, how the infection, how, how people respond to that infection, how, and how sick they get, uh, is a function of, uh, generally of, of age and of, of, of medical condition. So, um, if we are in a place where all of our educators and bus drivers have had a chance to get vaccinated, if they want to, um, then I believe we'd be well-positioned to have a, have a conversation about trying to return in full. So next caller is Karen Carey.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. So I have a lot of things. Um, so middle.
You have three minutes.
Middle school, I have an issue with dropping social studies in person, especially with such a historical time with a pandemic. First African-American Vice Prince, Vice President. with such a historical time with a pandemic, first African-American vice president, a new president. There's so much going on that I feel as though there's a lot of great conversation that could be had in person, which is much better than in a Google Meet with kids muted. There's been talk of possibly throwing a study hall in for a middle school, having not seen a full schedule. That's concerning to me, especially if they're only going to be in school for three classes. I'm concerned that the hours are really not conducive to any working parents, and that Google Meets really aren't a substitute for any in-person learning. I think we've gone over this before, that you can't replace in-person with Google Meets. You're just not going to get the same. Kids are not going to get the same out of it. So for the high school, where we're combining the two cohorts, I don't understand why we're not extending the day and having the kids be in school for five blocks. You don't have to give them lunch, have them dismissed at twelve thirty, and do one Google Meet and do a rotating schedule. As far as the waiting list for middle school, too, there's plenty of open spaces. So if you have classes that have too many kids and it can't accommodate that that amount of kids, have the class in the auditorium, have it in the cafeteria. It's certainly not being used for lunch. Have it in the pit or the gym lobby. There's plenty of open spaces that we can utilize at the high school and get these kids in person more, especially where the cohorts are already being combined. That should be a no-brainer, that we could absolutely do that. The Wi-Fi has been a big concern, and it's still a concern in a lot of the schools. And I'm hopeful that we've we've figured that out for the remote kids that will be doing Google Meets. But I'm wondering what we have in place going forward to ensure that the Wi-Fi has been upgraded for the fall. I'm also wondering if we've considered what the fall is going to look like, what our long-term plans are. We need to start doing this beforehand. We can't wait and do it over the summer or in September. We need to actually have a plan. And as far as like the three-feet piece, what is going to get us to that point where we can actually do that? Is it vaccinations? Do we have a plan? I listened to the Rockland superintendent saying that they've secured freezers that are in the schools, that the school nurses will be vaccinating the teachers, which actually seems like a pretty good plan to ensure that anyone who wants to get vaccinated can get vaccinated rather than doing it throughout their own town because they all live in different places. I'm going to run out of time. Do we have a plan to rent tents or things like that in the spring to ensure that we can have the kids, more kids in person, spread out for lunch? I know there's a space constraint, especially for elementary schools in itself, but do we have a plan that if vaccinations is one of the reasons how we can get kids back, then we really?
Thank you for your time. That's three minutes.
Next caller is Krista Stapleton.
Yes. Ms. Stapleton, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. I'm going to actually kind of ask that you address some of Ms. Carey's questions. They were valid, and I believe that they are something that needs to be done. My my other two concerns that I have, I have four children in three different schools. You have two over, you have a twenty-minute timeframe between pickup from high school to South Middle School over to Highlands. The expectation that you're placing on parents to be able to accommodate that, quite frankly, is unfair. And I know I'm probably, you know, one of few that have that many children in the school district, but I do. And we moved to this town three years ago for the school system, and I have to say, I, it's been disappointing thus far with the pandemic and the expectations that have been placed on the parents. I'm a healthcare provider, and I work in healthcare, and it's disappointing, to say the least, that we're every day, we're listening to something that they need to be vaccinated. I'm in, I'm in the hospital daily. I just got my first vaccine. There are ways around this that we can be safe and get these kids back into school. The mental health of these children is just as imperative as their physical health, and I think that's being completely missed on this page. And I'd like some answers and not be cut off and muted. So if you can go back to Ms. Carey's questions and answer those, that would be fantastic. And expectations on how we're how we're getting kids home in twenty minutes, three different schools.
Well, like, anyone, as a parent myself, if I have a problem, what I do is I'll go to, you know, your housemaster at the high school, or your principal in the middle school,
My, my. That's great. And I've been in contact with all of them, but that does not solve the issue of, I'm, you know.
We'll see what we can do to come up with something. How's that?
Great. And who's going to contact me and when?
Tell you what, send us an email with your phone number. I'll call you tomorrow.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay, that was easy.
And what about?
Come up with something else.
Well, I mean, and then the special ed kids, like, we're missing that. You know, all four of my children are not IEPs, like, how, and.
As am I.
Where, I don't actually, you know what, I appreciate your comments, but I don't need to be shut down by that. So I, as of yours, then you should be fighting for these kids to be in school a little bit longer. You should be fighting for these children to be getting the services that they need every single day. And that's not happening. And the dismissive tone is completely off-putting and unacceptable. It really is.
Excuse me, I thought that I was agreeing with you. Okay. I thought I was agreeing with you. But if you send an email in with your phone number, let's see what I can do to help you.
Great.
My phone number's on the website.
Fantastic. Thanks for your help.
Our next person, doctor?
Yes, next person is Michelle Dingan. Michelle, you are unmuted.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. Thanks for all of the information tonight. I do want to echo many of the concerns that other parents have been sharing. I think that the biggest one in my mind as of right now is the special education considerations. And I would love some commentary on that because it's Tuesday, six days away from the new schedule. We've had to hire an outside tutor that comes to our house sixteen hours a week. And I need to be able to let somebody know what our plan is. And I need to ensure that my daughter is going to continue to get in-person resource, which she's been getting these past two and a half months. I haven't received any information on that. And I just was wondering, from the administration, from all of you tonight, what consideration has been given with this new schedule for the special education scheduling?
I would just echo what's already been said this evening, that schedules will be coming out from your children's schools during the week this week. If you have questions that are specific to your child's IEP program or services, then you really need to work with your with your building principal or whoever's in in charge or the case manager for your child's IEP program.
We, I actually have done that. I've been in contact with them, as some of the other parents have said. I don't have, I feel like it's out of their control. I don't feel like they had all that much time to plan for this. And I just am, I'm kind of floored at the fact that parents are going to be expected to just drop everything, I mean, their work, their, everything that they do, and figure out when their kids have to be picked up. I have no idea at this point when my daughter's going to need to be picked up, because I'm, fingers crossed, I'm hoping that she's going to continue to get the in-person additional services, but I haven't been assured of that, and I work full-time. So I would really appreciate just a little bit of insight into the thought process and how much time was actually spent planning this, and why it, you know, none of us have actual schedules that, you know, kids on IEPs, which many of these parents on this call tonight are, why we don't have more details than we do now, six days out.
I can only say that schedules will be coming out later this week at the middle school level. Scheduling has been basically a total restructuring, so that that schedule is taking more time. The elementary level is obviously not as much of a change, and the high school level is a change. So I believe even tomorrow, high school will be issuing the master schedule, and I know that principals will be ready and be in touch with individual parents who have concerns or have questions regarding any any kind of services that children might be receiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Ellie Anderson.
Oh, you froze up, Frank. Okay, Ms. Anderson? I'm assuming.
Ms. Anderson, you are unmuted.
Ms. Anderson? Is she still with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. So, thank you. I have two questions. I'll make it quick. One, will our schools be participating in the COVID pool testing, and will that be a voluntary thing? And two, with the extension in place with structured learning, will that have to be made up at the end of the school year? And also, I just wanted to comment that the school committee has asked for a lot of grace, you know, and we as parents are also asking for the same thing. And many of the concerns addressed tonight are valid, so just a less condescending tone would probably go a long way to showing that you also are understanding of our frustrations at this point in February, almost February. Thank you.
The frustration is palatable on everyone that calls. I think the frustration can even be felt by us on the school committee. Just, these are not normal times. They're not even close. Frustration. We're supposed to be building schools. We're supposed to be doing so many things and, you know, pursuing excellence. And we're left with this. It's disheartening on, it's disheartening.
I can just provide a quick answer to the question. We are getting in the line, getting in the pipeline for pool testing. All the information is not entirely clear about expectations beyond a period of time in which pool testing will be done. So there will be more information coming out about that later this week. Next caller is Jen.
Jen, you have the floor.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Yes, good evening. This is Jen Foley calling. I just have a quick question for you. I wanted to see what the reasoning is behind the students not being able to eat at school. That seems to be sort of the linchpin of not being able to stay for a full day. You know, my two kids are at the high school specifically I'm thinking of, and I know that the school was built for a much larger population than is there now, even if they were to all be going, and plenty will be remote. So I just wanted to see what the reasoning was behind that. Would be great. Thank you.
I guess briefly answer, we've gone through quite a bit of discussions. We've had multiple large task force and groups come together as we've gone through from the very beginning of the opening, where we had over sixty people involved in the process of getting ready to open, to the discussions we were having around going to an additional time in the afternoon for elementary and going to three-feet physical distancing. We've had, we've had experts from Boston Children's Hospital talking about the the risk of having students take their masks off to eat lunch, that the transmission that hospitals are seeing is generally happening at lunchtime. And then we have some significant space issues in many of our buildings. High school is obviously a different situation, but we also know transmission at high school level and high school-age students is higher. But at our, a few of our schools, including South Middle School, we, we do not, we would not have the space. We were serving five lunch periods at South Middle School pre-pandemic. So to, there would be no way to get us at six feet, no real comfort level in staying at one or three feet for lunch with kids with masks off. So the next caller is Tina Gilman.
Ms. Gilman, you have the floor. Ms. Gilman, are you with us? We'll have to move on and come back. There must be some type of a problem with her, with her muted button.
Who is Jen D?
Jen D, you have the floor.
You are unmuted on our end.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, how are you? I was wondering, again, to repeat a lot of what the other parents are saying, is I don't feel like we're getting true answers to questions. So again, how you expect kids to get to to school in the middle of the day? I'm an essential worker. I don't have the choice to all of a sudden at noon, drive my daughter to school. And, you know, Ms., a lot of the other questions are just not being answered. And again, I know you guys are as frustrated as we are, but, you know, I have friends in other towns, Rainham specifically, these kids go to school full days. Yes, they do cohorts, but they go to school full day, they are served lunch, they eat in their classrooms, they have six feet of distance, and I don't understand why a school system as smart as Braintree is can't get it together. My, these kids need to be in school full day. I would rather my daughter go to school two days a week full day than this half, four days a week. They are not getting enough school time, and these children are suffering because.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate it.
Next caller is Stephanie McLaughlin.
Just to pick up on that for that last caller, it's really nice when people take the time to formulate questions and no one answers them. So you wonder why people are frustrated, but I digress. My question is around the Board of Health and the fact that the last time that we did have the director of the Board of Health on the call, she clearly stated that there were no cases that were transmitted in school, so that the transmission was not happening there. We're all aware that people have lives, teachers have lives, kids are doing things outside of school. So things might be happening outside of, but holding the school's ransom to, you know, just an ideology that you think is what's going on is not fair to everyone else. We're following the science, and the Board of Health is telling us that. I don't see why that can't factor in. I also will add, when it comes to lunches, I spoke specifically with her, and she shared with me that she has a family member that is getting lunch in school. I know towns around us that are having lunch in school. Now, I understand there's limitations with the middle school, the elementary, but for gosh's sake, if it works at the high school and you have enough room, can't you roll it out there and try it? Can't you try spreading kids out and giving them space that they need to have lunch? I feel like you're paralyzed by trying to solve all problems for all people instead of trying to solve the problems that you can solve. And then lastly, when it comes to this schedule, we all know it's, when it first came out as a possible option, I think we all thought this would be the absolute worst schedule and hoped this was not going to be what we were stuck with. But sadly, this is what we were stuck with. And so now we're like going backwards, trying to make this fit. And this is not a full three minutes that I got, by the way, that this closes.
Understood. I didn't reset the timer, so continue.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. I appreciate that. So I just, I really feel like we are not getting the, I'm muted.
Oh, wait a second. Come on, now she got a point to make. Let's get her back.
No, she's not muted.
I am muted.
No, you're not.
Well, we can hear you right now.
Thank you. Thank you. No, that's okay. So I just, I really think that the frustration is palatable, as you can tell, but I do not feel like the answers are coming through. I think people are raising valid points. I think sadly, you're, 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 you know, unfortunately, you're in a predicament, right? And we all know that. But listen, this is, you, you need to be a little bit bolder. You need to be braver. You need to try and do things. And yes, they might not be perfect from the jump, but we, it's going on February. We haven't done anything new since September. You have to try and start to do things. We have to be able to see what works and what doesn't. And then lastly, with technology, I too would love to see all this great improvement that have been made with technology. I'm not seeing it translate into the experiences that my children are having. So Belden's doing such a fantastic job, it would be really nice for someone to report. I listened to Needham High's school committee meeting the other night, and the depth and the detail that they got into in terms of what they are doing for tech planning for next year and what they've been able to do this year, it's really shameful that we don't have that level of detail. And people just aren't going to take people's words on it anymore. There's frustration, and we need answers. Thank you. And lastly, I will just, with all due respect, Mr. Devon, you, your, your attitude is a little, a little off-putting, and it has been a little disrespectful. So I do echo that earlier caller.
Oh, let me ask you. All right. What's your number?
You've never tried to call yourself?
What's your number? Hey, my cell phone number is on the internet. Call me. What's your number?
I don't need to call you.
Because we have fifty-six hundred kids. I need to know if we lose a couple of kids, if it's okay.
I don't need to call you.
Okay, great.
Okay, our next caller is Michelle.
Michelle, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Jen?
Yes.
Okay. I want to second Stephanie's comments about solving what you.
I want to second Stephanie's comments about solving what you can. There's already inequity, inequity across each level. And so if you can make something happen at the high school, you should. Plymouth North is having lunch every day. They're spreading the students between the CAF and the auditorium. That's something that can be done at BHS and, and you really need to strongly consider that and expand that in-person learning. I second the issue of the coinciding dismissals. It's not even an issue for me, but it's important enough for me to bring it up. You must know that these schedules lack common sense with that regard. You could easily bump something to alleviate this issue for parents. You need to make the, the extra effort in the 11th hour to fix that. I second the issue of losing in-person social studies in middle school. It's an unnecessary step backwards and again, signals a lack of common sense or progress. I'd like to request that the school committee investigate the winter sports fees. Given the shortened season, prorated fees should have been instituted. In particular, the $450 hockey fee should be prorated and refunded. The outgoing AD was contacted, but he redirected the parents to the school committee and he indicated that it's your group that sets the sports fees and that can help alleviate that issue. And I won't be rude, but I'm going to be direct. I also think your tone in response to public comments is dismissive and condescending. And I think you need to keep it in check. Parents, parents are frustrated and, and you need to be willing to listen and to take it in and to consider it. Thank you.
You're right. You're right, and I apologize. I, I say that because I came on as, as the chairman of the school committee thinking that we were going to build schools. And lo and behold, we go through this. And the thing that worries me is if you take 5,600 kids and you times it by, you know, potential fatalities and things like that, I, I, I've got to be, there is no dimension where I want to lose a student or lose a teacher or, or lose a parent. I had COVID myself some months ago and it's no joke. And I'm fearful, fearful of it. Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take the calls, I'll take the beating for it and things like that. Okay, I always told people I wasn't going to get out of this one alive, okay? But if we lose a student, I came here to build schools. And, and, and thank God, the, the rest of my school committee has helped with that, East Junior High and South and the ESCO projects and, and, and the roofing and the things that, that I, I know. And I know people are frustrated, I have children too. We've asked so much of you. We've asked the impossible. Like I said earlier, every single plan we go over is terrible. I don't think there's any school system that's doing right. Maybe, hey, listen, I'll open a look at anything that's out there. I know that you're frustrated. I know this is a terrible time for you. It's palatable. I, I, I hear the emotion in your voices. And I wish we had the answers. I don't think there's a district that has the answers. But we're doing the best we possibly can and we'll, you know, we'll listen to what we, what, what we've jotted down today and see if some of it can be dealt with at a later time. I think this is a good time to, shall we say, go into our executive session because we do have a hard stop later on today. But
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. Mr. Kors, you have the floor.
If I might, thank you.
Please.
First, I want to say we, we have listened and we get your emails. And, you know, again, we, this has been a very difficult road for everyone. We talked about it quite a bit on Thursday night at the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. We agree, our goal is to get kids 100% back in school. You know, the science doesn't agree. There's a lot of things that I, I heard this evening that, you know, we, we have wrestled with and we're continuing to wrestle with. We, we all agree that children need to be back in school full-time. We're trying to find the path there. And I think we've done, you know, we're doing the best to get there in the short term. So I, you know, I appreciate the patience and I hope we can continue to have that patience to get there. We, we do take everything that, that you tell us under advisement. We don't always have the answer. You know, we, this is public comment. We listen to the comments and we certainly work through them as a group and we try to figure out, you know, what the best way is to solve it. Some of them are individual and they have to be best solved at the building level or with administration and the ones that are broader, we certainly look at for the whole population. I, I just want to address one other comment that you made or question. We do set the athletic fees. We did get those emails. We want to make it clear, we met on this a couple of years ago, the athletic fees do not cover the cost of the athletics. They, they have an impact. They, they cover some portion, but they are not prorated, just like, you know, and, and maybe a bad example, but your trash fee, when you pay your trash fee, whether you put your two barrels out or you don't, your trash fee is your trash fee. There are fixed costs. Same thing with sports. There are fixed costs to hire coaches and, and many other pieces that even in a shortened season, don't get addressed through the athletic fee. So we, you know, we certainly have taken a look at it, but we just like, you know, we are not ignoring that, but we just want people to understand that is not what, that is not what covers athletics. It's just one portion of, of the cost of athletics. So I'll, I'll leave it there, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kors. Normally, we, we, I think we've gone far past by two or three times what we normally do for public comment. We do have business that we have to enter into executive session. So as of right now, I'm going to call the public comment portion of this. Obviously, if you'd like to email, make phone calls, you know, there again, my cell phone is on the, on the website. And I, I do return phone calls. I do believe at this time, we do have to enter into executive session in consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A.3, "To discuss a strategy for the negotiation of a personal services contract and collective bargain as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on that legal position of the said school committee," as declared by the chair. So at this point in time, we know that we don't have to come back out of executive session. So I will ask for a motion to enter into executive session with us with a second and then we'll, we'll take a roll call vote. And then I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So do I have a, a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Good, thank you. Roll call, vote to enter into executive session. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kors?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? And Mr. Devon, I vote aye, we'll be entering into executive session. We'll now enter ten, a, a, a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second? Roll call, vote, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kors?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? And the chair votes aye, we'll be entering into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We'll listen to what was said and try and move forward on those said things. Thank you, we'll see you all in executive session.